Welcome to our council meeting. Our delegate are here. For the first item in the adoption of the agenda, we'd like to get resolved that the agenda for the April 12th and April 2nd meeting be accepted as presented. Can I get a mover? Mr. Harpays, secondor. Mr. Corey. All in favor? Any opposed? Carry. Confirmation of the minutes. Be resolved that the minutes of the March 15th, 2022 regular meeting of council be hereby approved as circulated. Can I get a mover? Secondor is Mr. Hatch. All in favor? And we're also going to do the confirmation of the minutes. So it will be resolved at the minutes of the April 7th. Special meeting of council be hereby approved as circulated. Can I get a mover? Mr. Harpays and a secondor. Counselor Corey, all in favor? Carry. And finance. Be resolved that the April 7th, 2022 general accounts payable being check numbers 5622 to 5668 in the amount of $218,830.57 be hereby approved. Can I get a mover? Harpays and a secondor. Mr. Hatch. All in favor? Carry. Be resolved that direct deposit number 208 being staff payroll for the period March 7th to March 18th in the amount of $13,043.26 be hereby approved. Can I get a mover? Secondor, so we got Counselor Corey and then the other counsel. I should be asking, is there any questions? All in favor? Carry. Be resolved that direct deposit number 210 being staff payroll for the period March 21st to April 1st in the amount of $5,758.25 be hereby approved. Can I get a mover? Secondor. Any discussion? All in favor? Carry. And be resolved that the direct deposit is 211 being council indemnities for the months of March 2022 in the amount of $6,018.71 be hereby approved. Can I get a mover? Mr. Corey and a secondor. We've got Counselor Hatch. Any questions? All in favor? Carry. And we've got the utility account. Be resolved that the April 7th, 2022 utility accounts payable being a check number 845 to check number 851 in the amount of $6,423.76 be hereby approved. Can I get a mover? Counselor McDonald, secondor. Counselor Harpays. Any questions? All in favor? Carry. And we've got the statement of revenues and expenditures. Be resolved that the statement of revenues and expenditures reported to March 31st, 2022 be received as presented. Can I get a mover? Mr. Counselor McDonald, secondor. Counselor Corey. Any discussion? Questions? All in favor? Carry. And we've got bankrupt conciliations. Be it resolved that the bankrupt conciliations for the month of March 2022 be approved as previously circulated. Can I get a mover? Counselor Hatch, secondor. Counselor Harpays. Any questions? All in favor? Carry. Do you want to...
Okay, public hearings are scheduled for May 15th, so we should maybe move ahead to correspondence. Okay? Just to give anybody a chance for May 15th. Okay? So Joni, if you could take us to the presentation. That would be great. I'm sure. So under the order of communications, we have information from the Association of Manitoba Land Surveyors. It is their 2022 register. And that is kept on file. The Association of Manitoba Municipalities provided us several pieces of information. One is dated March 11th. There are two that are March 14th, March 24th, March 25th, March 29th, March 30th, and two from April 1st. Caltech has given us information on a surveyed monument restoration that they'll be doing in the municipality. The Canadian Public Works Association is reminding us that National Public Works Week is May 15th to the 21st. So we'll maybe do a proclamation to have on our May agenda for that. The Central St. Boyne Watershed District is letting us know that there is water well testing days that are coming up. And there is a bit of a price increase. So that information is included in your correspondence. Clean Farms are providing us information regarding with respect to changes to container recycling program. And Public Works has let our waste transfer stations know that this is coming about and will be providing information to people who attend. The next one is one the council hasn't spoke about at all. Heron and Warren Ellis are wanting to know if the municipality is doing anything in particular for assistance to Ukrainian refugees. And if anybody is doing anything, they would like to help. What I am aware of is the Association of Manitoba Municipalities has got a couple of efforts underway. And if council wants to do anything above and beyond that, we would need direction to do so. That could include something as simple as using some of your grant funds that are left from your budget allocation. And we get to do that. Federation of Canadian Municipalities sent community dated March 14th, March 21st, March 28th, April 4th, and two community dates dated April 6th. Municipal Relations have sent out a bullet with respect to the Municipal Enforcement Support Program. And that is concluding. And our staff is aware of that. Municipal Relations also sent out a bulletin on the update on support for the Ukraine. And the municipality of Service Glenwood has sent out information with respect to providing funding to try and resolve position shortages. I think a council will want to do anything in that regard that could require a resolution. And I would just note that there wasn't an amount included in any of our budgets for this year. And that is the end of communications.
Okay. So be it resolved that the above noted communications be received. Can I get a mover? Mr. Harpays and a secondor. We've got Counselor Hatch. Any discussions?
I have one discussion. On Zing Farms Darcy, on the changes to the container recycling program, where do we fall under? Are we considered small or medium or large? Like, I'm not communicating that. Like, some will be shut down this year. Some medium ones will be next year. The big ones will be shut down in '24.
Yeah, SOZ next year. I understand. Yep.
And I'd also like to add the Association of Manitoba Municipalities regarding the two initiatives that our CEO gave information on. That the two initiatives are funding for refugees coming to Canada, Manitoba specifically. And another one was for financial support or aid going to Ukraine to people that are there for humanitarian need. So there's two different initiatives there. So we've got some good projects on the go as there as well.
Do we know where any refugees coming to our area? Has anyone heard?
I don't specifically for our area.
I haven't heard either. I know that there is a family or two in the service area who have offered up that they've got space available in their homes. My understanding is they had kind of an overwhelming response. And so I don't know whether everybody who has put the name forward may in fact have anybody stay with them or not.
Any other questions, discussions, or concerns? All in favor? Carry.
I think there is still time to do committee reports before we start the public.
Can I start there with the committee reports? Counselor Corey, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay. And then for myself, I've got nothing to add. North Ward, Ward 2. Counselor Harpays, anything to add?
Just that I attended the budget hearing.
Counselor Hatch, anything to add? Thank you. And what was Ward 1? Counselor McDonald, anything to add? Anything to add? And we've got Counselor McGregor, Wade. So anything to add there? And council, have you got anything to add?
Anything to add?
Okay. Thank you. And we've got our CEO report. Anything to add?
Just making note of the fact that we are getting all sorts of urgent messages about the pending storm. And we have started sending out pushes to residents. Basically, make sure you've got medications. Make sure you've got water, food. Probably make sure that your vehicles are fueled up. Stay off the roads because if the storm is as bad as predicted, even our equipment will not be out until visibility improves. And I know the CAA is making announcements that if anybody is traveling on roads that are closed, CAA will not be sending assistance. So please stay home if the storm is as bad as predicted. And on that note, in all likelihood, our office will be closed probably Wednesday, Thursday. Then that leads us into the Easter long weekend.
Thank you. Our finance officer, anything to report?
Just that we had a scheduled on the storm. It's increased.
Yeah. Okay. Public Works, anything to add?
No, so Joni pretty much covered it off.
Okay. And while we're at the public works, we've got their report on file. And we've also got a fire chief's report on file. Joni, do you know if there's anything to add for either one of those?
Fire chief, I did check him yesterday to see if there's anything specific to the storm. Like, he said that they will respond if it's possible. But again, that's going to depend an awful lot on what the storm brings.
Okay. Thank you.
Joni, can I just add something? That you have the generator at the command center at the fire hall. Like, if some power goes through. Set some one behind what kind of that sort of works. Just go with it. We do have that option.
We do our emergency coordinator travel by Brandon. So again, if the highways aren't open, she won't be able to get here. But it is nice to know that we do that central.
Thank you. Our vet board report, anything to add?
Yes, the vet board approved the purchase of the X-ray that I mentioned in my report since.
Okay. So be it resolved that the verbal and written reports be received. Can I get a mover? Counselor Corey and a secondor. We have got Counselor Harpays. Any discussion? All in favor? Carry. If you would like to go back to the public hearings. We do need to have the first resolution. It will be called by skin too. Public hearings. Okay? Okay. So we get it all. That the regular meeting of council be recessed to allow council to hold public hearings to receive presentations from any person who wished to make them in respect to two variation applications and a development plan amendment. Can I get a mover? Counselor Harpays, can I get a secondor? Counselor McDonald. All in favor? Carry. You can always try to make some progress through the background.
Certainly. So the first two public hearings are for Mr. Weed's subdivision that was approved. So the variations were a requirement of that. I will let you know that there has been no phone calls and no written representation received. I would ask if there is anybody in the audience who is interested in making representation for the minor variation, which would be to reduce the parcel size from 80 acres to 70.93 acres. I would invite you to come forward to the delegation table at this time. And there appears to be no one.
Okay. So whereas all representatives in regard to minor variation application V3/22 to reduce the parcel size for the residual parcel from 80 acres to 70.93 acres for property located in the northwest quarter of 26, 8, 19 WPM, we have been dealt with. Therefore, be resolved. Pardon me. I'll call the question. All in favor? I should get a motion around here. I'm ahead of myself here. Sorry about that. Get a mover, please. Get a mover on that motion. Okay. With Counselor McDonald, secondor. Counselor Corey. And we've already done the favor. So we'll call it carry.
All right. The second public hearing is also a variation for Mr. Weed. And this is to reduce the parcel site width from 1,000 feet to approximately 809 feet. Again, I would note there has been with no telephone communications or no written communications. So again, if there's anybody interested in coming forward, I would invite you to do so at this time. And there is no one.
Okay. So whereas all representatives in regard to variation application V4/22 to reduce the parcel site width for the residual parcel from 1,000 feet to approximately 809 feet for property located in the northwest quarter of 26, 8, 19 WPM, we have been dealt with. Can I get a pour? Yeah. Therefore, be resolved that the public hearing be concluded. And then we'll call the mover. Can I get a mover? Counselor Harpays, a secondor. Counselor Corey. All in favor? Carry.
Okay. The next public hearing is for a proposed development plan amendment. I will make note of the fact that we have received the written report from the community in regional planning. And Carla is here and she will be able to address council. We have received written representation in support of the application. Gilbert and I believe they are in attendance and will address council. We have received written opposition from Mr. Flickford, the 210 metal recycling. And I don't know whether he would want to address council further, but it is there. And at this time, I would call the applicants to come forward to the delegation table if you would. And you can make your presentation and keep prepared to answer any questions for council right now.
Sure.
Well, good morning, everyone. And thank you for acknowledging our request. So Gilbert and I, we are owners of our soul's question. The request is to resell part of northwest quarter of 2819 WPM for future subdivisions. So this parcel was originally owned by a doctor in Brandon who rented a property from Mr. Murray Kozak, who operates a grain and cattle farm. Mr. Kozak has offered first right to purchase this property when the doctor decided to sell. After three months, Murray decided not to go forward with the purchase. Therefore, we have the opportunity to purchase this property through Home Life Real Estate. This agricultural zone property has very little value as agricultural as it is mostly bushland and has many low spots, which is littered with stones. And it's an oddly shaped lot for agricultural use. Mr. Kozak at the time must have seen the low agricultural value in his property, or he would have. Matter of fact, Mr. Kozak rents a small piece of hayland from us on the north end of this property. Murray complained about how rough the field was for many years and hesitated to establish the field because he's aware of how heavily infested the field is of stone on this land. When Gilbert established a yard on property, Murray did some work for him. And he can snicker if he be to cut the grass in the yard there because of all the problems. Through many years of communication with Mr. Kozak as neighbors, many times even helping each other out, Murray always maintained that he would not be opposed of my plan of subdividing this property as long as he has first chance to purchase the most solidly lot as a buffer zone for himself. He has even expressed a few times that one of his sons would like to establish a yard on this buffer zone. In communication with Mr. Kozak this week, he made comments of possible water issues, part of which could be dealt with in the development plan, such as holding tanks and sisters. He also mentioned a buffer zone again between his property and other lots, which he states that he would not be willing to pay residential tax on, yet he wants his son to build a yard there. Mr. Kozak once mentioned that people, called city slickers, what he calls them, would complain of his wife's toxic and dirty practices. Grasping at straws to get his way. Mr. Kozak seems a bitter man due to the fact that he defined the opportunity of owning and controlling the use of the land years ago. Gilbert even offered to donate him a most solidly 100 feet. He would rather purchase a solidly lot if it should catch up. He now presents to be a person that is very difficult to please. Mr. Kozak, though, saw it 50 years ago, subdivided a piece of his property and sell it where a craft yard business now exists today. Mr. Flickford would not have the property his business is sitting on if it had not been for a subdivision. This person operates an environmentally sensitive business at the edge of a wetland, possibly affecting the environment with many species of wildlife and fish. A business operated without visual barrier to a highly sign eater. When Gilbert attended Mr. Flickford's business quite a few times in the past, he would often be approached and state that if Gilbert was to donate him 15 acres on the north end of the property where he could relocate his craft business, he would not show any objections to any subdivision on our behalf. He thought it was odd that he wanted to operate a commercial business where subdivision would need to take place and yet seems to show concern of rezoning to his natural. If I'm not mistaken, he would need to rezone the property to commercial. He was quite bitter that he wasn't aware that our property was after sale when I purchased it. Mr. Flickford finds out how much he cherished his country living. Many other people who have communicated with us also share the same feeling. Mr. Flickford makes reference to our property being ideal grazing land. My experience as a previous agricultural producer, which is Gilbert, does not constitute bushland as the ideal grazing land. If it was decent agricultural land, it would have been purchased by a farmer years ago. Mr. Flickford makes reference to dust, noise, and fumes, all of which could be dealt with in a development plan. Most of this parcel is existing bushland. It's an ideal sound barrier. Any potential buyer can clearly see that he clearly see and be made aware of these. We see people complaining of fumes in cities and towns where they reside next to major corridors. Many municipalities have residents pay for their own dust control. Our purpose here is not to point fingers at anyone. And excuse us if it does feel that way. But when fingers are pointing at us, we'll just take facts as we know them. We have been in contact with Manitoba Department of Highways back in 2013 as per the municipal instructions. And the highways instructed Gilbert at the time to proceed with subdivision application at that time. In conclusion, we have been approached by many interested parties in the past who would like to establish a small acreage close to Highway 10, all of which are people who have grown up on farms and would much prefer a little bit more elbow room instead of a city postage stamp lot for coffee farm. Guarding or bigger residential lots. This is as close to agricultural use as a residence can be. We aren't impossible people to work with. Rules can be part of any property specific development plan. A buffer zone can be left in place in its natural state. And what a perfect place for that. A perfect setting because it is all bushland. By rezoning this property and repurposing it, repurposing it, the municipality would benefit substantially by increased tractability. And overall, it would make better use of this property by offering small acreages to interested buyers. To be clear to the opposition, our intent is to resell this property from agricultural use to residential and not commercial. What happens in the future would be between the municipality and the potential owner. Therefore, we're making a very simple request to the RM of Oakland, Wauwunisa, to resell this parcel of land from agricultural to residential. So we'd like to thank you in advance for your consideration. Thank you very much. Does council have any questions for the applicants at this time?
If you were going to go through your residential development, what size would your lots be? Well, we had thought on the north end of possibly having two-earlier lots for people that want a smaller parcel. Because some people prefer two-earlier parcels instead of ten-earlier parcel. Originally, we had thought of all ten-earlier parcels on the best reading of the property. There's a few that would rather have a smaller two-earlier lot rather than ten-earlier. That's why we thought we'd go in that direction. But we're not in the policy. We're not like absolute on that. We're going to look at that. Including council.
So question being, how many lots on average?
The plan right now was to have five two-earlier lots on the north end. Five approximately to have features for 90.
Access, are they onto the private road or are they on the tree line road or?
It would be two accesses on the east. Five lots, shared access. Two pairs and one private. And there'd be two shared accesses on to the purpose. In communication with the highway department, as I had been instructed in 2013 by the municipality, communicate with them to tell us. No, we're not saying no. First, with your subdivision first, you can't say we're not going to grant you access when there's not even a subdivision. The first thing to do is do the subdivision, then come to us because we don't have anything against that.
Anything we received?
That was their communication with us at the time.
So this is, you've applied for this before? For this subdivision?
Yes, in 2015.
And it was obviously denied? Right. What were the reasons? Still, or?
Don't, off the top of my head. I probably pulled the file. It was council's decision not to proceed. So I don't think it got to the ministerial stage.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. At this time, I would ask if there was anyone else who would like to come forward and make representation to council? If you would like to come to the delegation table?
Very good. Just so everybody knows.
Would you like to get your name and the property that you are representing?
Good morning. My name's Daniel Burns. I own and reside immediately east of the subject site. So I own the easterly 80 acres that blocks the proposed subdivision or redesignation. Actually, it's what we're discussing this week today. So thank you for the opportunity to meet with council this morning. I just, for, see, I have a visual representation. I passed out a little sketch that I just threw together. So the west half of the north, that's 2819, that's the property that's being proposed for redesignation. I own the east half. I have lot two, communicated to the red. That's primarily pasture land that I own and rent. her. Murray has cattle along in that area, and my residence is in the lot one, this is one called one, it's not subdivision for discussion purposes. Again, my name is Daniel Burns, and I do own the eastern half of the quarter section adjacent to the subject site. I'm here today to register an opposition to the redesignation from ag to residential. While I'm a supporter of development in general, I believe the R M of Wauwunisa needs to look for opportunities to increase their tax base. My opinion, this is not the appropriate location. I do a lot of this work professionally, actually, I'm an engineer and I do subdivision work. It's one of my main areas of practice, so I'm fairly well versed in the departments from a land use planning perspective, so, and I don't like to be considered an idiot or not in my backyard because I do this work all the time, on both sides of the table for a poor and, and in opposition to development. I spend a lot of time considering, do I oppose this one? I received this in the mail, you know, I, I look at it from a strictly neocentric perspective and the other is benefits for density, and I think we all recognize the increased tax base is essential for the municipality. Is this the right area? Spent some time thinking about that, just spent time thinking about the appropriate provisions of the Planning Act, Municipal Act, and the R M's development plan, and how this would fit within that. And ultimately, I decided that I didn't feel, personally, I didn't feel that this was the right location, so I want to maybe discuss some of my rationale for that from, more from a professional perspective. So why do I oppose the redesignation? In accordance with the Manitoba Planning Act, the R M's and the R M's development plan, counsel must satisfy that, must be satisfied by any redesignation meets the test. What is the test? The test is set as the planning act states, that counsel must consider the following when considering change, excuse me, a change of designation. Will the proposed designation be compatible with general nature of the surrounding area? One of the tests we have to be satisfied with. Will it not be detrimental to the health and general welfare of people living or working in the surrounding area, or negatively affect other properties or potential development in the surrounding area? That's question two. Question three, is it generally consistent with the applicable provisions of the planning or development plan, bylaw, and zoning by law? So is there three questions that counsel has to be satisfied with in order to approve such a designation? Question, the counsel must consider, it will be, is, will it be compatible with the general nature of the surrounding area? I submit to you this thought, the surrounding area consists of large holdings suitable for agriculture. The purpose, or the proposed redesignation will take a large holding and subdivide it into small lots. Weren't sure what lots, but I hear from the applicant this morning, maybe four ten acre lots and maybe five two acre lots, so that's what they're looking for. That's definitely not consistent with the surrounding nature of the agricultural area of large holdings. These lots would be sold to residential purposes. This is not compatible with the surrounding agricultural properties added there. Allowing that dense residential development to be established adjacent to farmland is not consistent with the planning act. The reason that the planning act protects farmland is to reduce potential conflicts that will occur with residential lots adjacent to farmland. The neighboring property is well-established family farm that has been raising cattle for decades, and the potential to create conflict between the farming industry and the residential at large in this particular situation. Can counsel reasonably say that it is compatible, in my opinion, with it? The second part of the test relates to will it not be detrimental to the health and general welfare of people living, working in the area, or negatively affect properties or potential developments around here? This one's a little more difficult to assess. Will it negatively impact me? Likely not, but it limits my ability to be able to do what I want with my, currently I rent approximately sixty acres, that's in red, to my neighbor, Mr. Kozak. So who uses this land is for grazing and it's cattle in the summer. It's an ideal situation for, for both of us, he's able to keep cattle on my land and it keeps some of my underbrush clean out, and so it's worked well. We've got a good relationship, I've lived there for nine years, and it's always been admirable. Haven't come across Murray being too difficult in my experience in dealing with them over the past nine years. So well, you know, so currently I rent the sixty acres to my neighbor, they just got a low residential development limit, this make it less desirable for cattle when there's increase in activity, possibly. I witnessed with, with the one residence that currently lives in the, in the bush, you know, they've got kids and that's great, the kids are out playing, but they also have dirt bikes that are out ripping around in the back and making noise and spooking cattle, so that's one house. If we're going to put ten more houses in that area, that's ten more potential conflicts that have to be considered, and counsel's going to be getting phone calls when they're complaining about cattle and vice versa, so that's, it's something that needs to be considered with allowing it in that proximity. I see in my security cameras neighbors' dogs cruising around my yard all the time, and that's one, one house again, you know, just potential for cattle. My kids are out in the back shooting squirrels and trapping and doing what they do in the bush, that's why I moved there, so they could live that lifestyle. Safety concerns, you know, shooting and having fun doing what kids are supposed to do in life, being, when you live in a country and not a farm, more people's higher chance for some, some issues to occur, so it's something that I'm concerned about. So do I feel negatively affects my life or my ability to do what I want, yes. The third part of the test, is it generally consistent with typical provisions of the development plan? No, it's not. This area is a hundred percent designated agricultural and is subject to different. We live in a farming community where others respect that the livelihood is based on the rural agricultural market. Am I a farmer? No, I raise chickens for a hobby, that's what I do in the summer, it's something to do. Do I farm? No, but do I understand farming? Yes, I work pretty well at farm with dairy, hogs, chickens, so I understand the farming life and the challenges and the, I go with it and need to be applying manure and spraying your fields, and I can complain about it, no, I do the same thing, I spray my pasture to try to deal with it, first have the elbow of the time and I'll look after that. Putting a whole bunch of residents in that area that may not be familiar with our lifestyle living in the country, it always costs. There's no doubt in my mind like that. So I, you know, I submit that we aren't, this area is not generally consistent with the provisions. To my review of the planning act and considering the three test questions that counsel must consider, it's my opinion that the proposed development fails all three, after this reason, the council will be obligated to deny second reading. I sat down last night, I actually just put some of these notes together, and I thought just judging out a few points of, you know, what's, what would this mean to me and what does it look like? Two of the points that I think I'll just touch on briefly, one of the facts that we need to consider is the distance to the existing cattle operation and P lot. I believe your zoning and development plan requires an eight hundred meter separation buffer. Proving this would reduce that separation from down to zero, which would require various and all that. There's a reason why there's an eight hundred meter buffer in development plans is to try to prevent conflicts in that road curricula with a bunch of people living next to cattle operations, so. Road safety is always concerned, more people, more traffic, more potential for accidents, but that's going to happen in any development, so it's maybe something to think about. Are roads in that area, I get the job, I'm fortunate, I only have to drive half a mile up Trees Bank Road every day, it is horrible. You're having a hell of a time keeping it together, I can't wait to see what this snow is for that, no time for last fall, but it's a whole different story, you can help me a little later. It's, it's tough, and putting more traffic on it is potentially going to be a problem, so you know that's going to increase your earnings. Talked a little bit about safety in the bush and being able to, for me to be able to use the land and not to be scared after shooting squirrels and kids and trapping, you know, we do, I have different concerns with that. Trespassing, I don't want to be a neighbor that's out, but not no trespassing signs, I believe in, you know, neighborly love and working and helping each other out. Murray and I have always had that. He goes over wherever, whenever he needs to, and I go over his yards whenever I need to, and that's the way it should be. You know, if you put ten more people living there, ten more residents, there's definitely going to be people crawling around in the bush with this, that's what kids do, it's recreation area, I would have the same. Grazing of cattle, Murray's cattle occasionally get out, especially calves that can get through fences, you know, whether, what is a city person that's got a cow walking around in their backyard going to do, you know? Is that, is that appropriate, something to think about? And farm equipment safety, so. I had the opportunity to review the community planning report also that counsel received yesterday, and I'm assuming everybody has reviewed that, and I think it's, very explicitly states that, you know, they, Manitoba ag would be opposed to any redesignation in this area. They would recommend that you also deny the second reading because of the conflicts and the setback distance considerations. And Manitoba Infrastructure, the applicant indicated today that they told them to apply, but their report to counsel indicates that they would not support any new accesses off the front of the road, so any accesses, any development would have to be serviced by a new internal road, that's not even in the applicant's plans, so. Manitoba Infrastructure, but that is a big hammer because I go against them all the time and we don't convince them otherwise, and they've made up the mind, have indicated in their planning report that they would not support, or they, they wouldn't oppose the development, but they would not approve any new accesses off the front of the road, that's considered involved in that, and having multiple shared access drivers, a challenge, so I'll doubt that we'll be able to, I can't say, but it's something that we need to consider in making your decisions. So in conclusion, the redesignation of lands does not meet the test that's set out in the planning act that counsel has to be satisfied for, and therefore counsel has responsibility to scrape papers to deny second reading. Any questions again?
Does anyone have any questions? Can I be able to finish off with your presentation?
I can send you one if it doesn't have my scribbles on it.
Just, this is kind of the periphery of the, of the issue, but you've dealt in this a lot, what would you say is a more, is a better place for subdivision like this? Because I've struggled with this myself.
Well, from a land use planning perspective, fragmenting farmland is always frowned upon, and especially development adjacent to primary livestock, intensive livestock is, you know, in this particular case makes it the less desirable. If you were to say where, in our area, well, if you look another mile east of Trees Bank, counsel has over the years fragmented a number of lots, they redesigned it in 2017 in your development plan, an area, think the quarter section to a real residential already, so in doing so, you signaled, or counsel at the time signaled, that that's, the intent was to focus the density of more residential into that area. So that, that would be, my opinion would be that it makes more sense to continue, you have already sort of set a residential cluster, well, then you want to continue to build on that cluster and see it grow, but focus. But if you start doing that everywhere and everybody that wants a piece, it fragments all the land and it does impact farming activity, so. That's probably honestly my main reason for when I looked at this and said, you know, is this a good idea or isn't this? And I'm, I'm pro development, I do development all the time, that's the main reason, is when I looked at it, I think it serves with the impacts it has with Murray's cattle operation, and you've already established an area and you're peasant haven and you're common plan to say, this is where we want to see the residential growth, stick to it, that's what we've been seeing, that's why you do it all the time, if you do that every five years to identify those areas, and then that gives you a master plan to work off of, then that's your focus to say, this is where we want to see growth, okay? They don't want to be bringing everywhere else to us.
Thank you. Would a larger lot size by the applicant change your view at all?
No, I don't think so. Couple of reasons, access board, and still even if you had, what would you consider a larger lot size, like, from a land use planning, the province and ponders will tell you ten acres is a waste of land for residential, because what does somebody do that lives on an acreage with ten acres of land? Typically, that's too large of a lot, so a preference from a fine perspective typically is five or two acre lots, if you're going to take a large holding and, and fragment it, well, then you want to increase your density, so, honestly, ten acre lots there I think is a mistake as well, you know, if you were to do something smaller, lots is probably better than, than larger lots.
But smaller lots creates conflicts.
It does, that's why this is.
Larger, larger lots won't.
That's why this is a poor area, but larger lots waste land, so in the long term, that's generally considered a waste of land from a planning perspective, lot is planning.
I'll look for somebody that would like to raise a couple steers for their own consumption.
There's, there's definitely times that it would make sense, yeah. So if you're talking strictly residential.
So if it was split into two forty acre pieces and one more, one more house, forty?
I don't know, I should, you could probably handle that from a various perspective from what, but within the rules of the planning act, maybe the province could speak better to that, two, two forties would make it, I guess.
And just for my clarification, you do not live on this property?
Not presently, no.
So I have a question as well, not necessarily for yourself, but regarding rural residential rezoning on a ten acre lot, can you have livestock for this rezoning?
Yeah, community and mutual planning can address that in their conversation as well, but we did amend our zoning bylaws to include residential large lots, which would be ten acres, and the purpose, if you recall, counsel, for doing that was to allow for some hobby farms without required conditional use. Thank you very much for your presentation. Is there anyone else who would like to ask counsel at this time?
All right, I'm going to pull that, now you're looking so silly. Thank you. Just to refer to this, the statement that they own this land, you're actually with my brother, he had a good community in the doctor, when my brother got sick, and I mean that's when we were available, and offered with me, doctor got asked this and said we wanted to subdivide it, so that's what I all sent, which is not so true what they said, but whatever. My big, we made a vote this, uh, with cattle, we need constant water supply, we run seven seven five and a hundred cows. When it's permissible, right now we're down to around seventy-five because of the drought, and water is a major, well, cattle want to be mean, fresh water, and so they always dug it. But my, my biggest complaint is, I guess, and it's not that you complained, you overnight talked several times prior to this meeting, we did offer a hundred foot buffer zone, which to me was not, not adequate enough, just, we have cattle running on Mr. Burns's land, and the fence lines are still clearing up the border, so when you have extra people, basically Mr. Burns covered more of this than what I was doing, and I'm going to stand on what he's always said, look, I mean, I have a few people that like to farm with cattle, they're just getting into it, so. They're just getting into it. So I would like to, hopefully they would have the opportunity to live the way that we have in the years. And, uh, basically that's, I don't have a, I don't real. I'm not going to criticize anyone, but I think that, um, Mr. Burns pretty much covered all I was really concerned about. My biggest concern is, uh, trying to keep cattle, keep learning, growing.
Awesome.
But you gotta have a good water. In our area, it's very hard to get good water. And maintain good well sources. So that's really, I guess, my complaint is those plans opposing that. The reclassification from that is called the residential. And that's all I have to say.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Koldak? I just got the one. Have you had any water issues for livestock in the past?
Oh yeah, we, uh, we've done more than one well. And, uh, it's hard to find, so when you find it, you're trying to look after it.
Yeah. Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Okay, we've got Mr. Burns in the back, has a question.
Would be appropriate to add one comment to that to lift it up.
Perfect.
Um, well, our groundwater in that area is generally known to, to travel in the southeasterly direction towards the river. So there, there definitely, there is potential that that could cause groundwater issues for livestock operation. Because the farming operations is southeast of where the wells would be installed. That could be dealt with from a groundwater investigation to review that and determine whether it would be an issue.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Well, I think Daniel did a good job of covering most of my points. Yeah. I've only talked to Gilbert once or twice. And then the last time I think we spoke, he had asked if I would have any objections to him subdividing out the piece in the middle there now. So he could build a house for himself and reside there. Uh, but that's obviously not what he was intending. He was trying to subdivide it further. Yeah, he said he just wanted one lot to build a house for him to live at and, uh, he still does not live there. And, uh, he's applied now to re- rezone it and, uh, subdivide it. I never met his wife, but she seems to, uh, know a lot about me, but, uh, um, and I've never been offered fifty acres of land. I've never had that conversation ever with either one of them. Just to put that on the record as well. Uh, I would allow, I think Daniel covered it quite well. I wouldn't be opposed to one or two lots there, but the, the density that he's looking to do, I think I would be against. That would be all I have to add.
Any other questions for Mr. Koldak?
Um, are there times, I've been to your business a couple of times, but are there times where there's say more noise, more smell than other times?
Uh, summertime is definitely our busy season. Uh, there's lots, we've got lots of big trucks. We've got trucks going back and forth hauling loads every day. Like right now, we're probably sometimes twelve, twenty loads a day go up and down that, uh, road and all. Big highway trucks, they're not little half tons or nothing like that. So, they make a lot of dust and pound out the roads pretty bad. So, um, definitely one of the concerns I'd have would have, that road is hard enough to keep in one piece. Yes, I have one. Paul might be even be able to ask, is it Daniel? If there was a subdivision there, there's, the dust was a problem. Who would create for the dust control on that, on that front of the road? It's on the province.
The province doesn't do hardly any, any word of my knowledge unless it's changed, but it will be up to the local landlords to tell you. Like a lot of them have, you know, there's probably a little, you know, dust control. It could apply to your province at one time, but I don't have a lot of business.
Any other questions?
Um, is it okay? You've got a question?
I have, uh, just a few comments. Um, just a reminder that we're, we're here to apply for a rezoning to residential. We're not at the subdivision stage yet. So everything is why we're here for input, um, which doesn't mean that we have our subdivision plan, well, planned out. As far as wells are concerned, we did mention in our presentation that cisterns and
Storage tanks.
Storage tanks are always an option and that's the way of life these days. Because not everyone takes it well.
Mining, mining your spout is, that's part of the development plan. That's the only way you can get any water.
Uh, as far as Gilbert residing there, Gilbert originally subdivided that piece of land and resided there for, how many years did he live there?
He lived for five years.
Five years when he decided to move away. So it was always intended as a residential property when he subdivided it. So it's not like he subdivided to run away.
We have two children that live in the area here in Brandon and our plan is to, uh, build a home there one day and retire here. Right now, his work is taking us closer to my baby.
And like we always, we said in our statement too, as far as a buffer zone, that we will, we will entertain all, all the new folks. This is why we're here. We're here firstly to rezone it and then we want to work with.
With the mining spouty, with the local residents.
For this.
And we've always had a good working relationship with our neighbors. More as friends than, than anything else.
Yeah. And the access off the number, the service road is already a shared access right now. And that's something we have to deal with, uh, a little bit when you develop that property, but also when we sold the property.
We just sold the property. He's, uh, this year.
I've been renting the property to the same, uh, people since I moved away from the properties. The neighbors seem to all get along together and then they approached me, asking me if I was interested in that, getting in the thought of selling it to them. Seeing as I don't have immediate use for the property, I thought suitable to, you know, give it to proper people to live in here.
And, and that is a seven acre, seven acre parcel?
That's a seven acre.
Seven acre. Which is good. It was a good. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
That's okay. And, uh, community and regional planning, would you like to address council on your report?
Council, I have to leave. So I will phone in. Darcy, I'll phone to your phone.
Sure.
Thank you, everyone.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Lilawa. I'm the regional manager for the Brandon Community Planning Office. And so I believe everyone has a copy of your, your, your report that I submitted to John Hill yesterday. Um, so just before I go through some things in the court, just wanted to summarize a few things that I heard, um, just today, earlier on. So yes, we're not looking at a subdivision at this point in time. We're, we're looking at the redesignation, potential redesignation of an area that's required in the development plan. And so that's what this discussion is about. And there's a level of hierarchies of what we need to go through. We need to re-designate the area to support any future development. That's what we're discussing. Then the next part is about rezoning to, uh, nestle within the pre-designation if it were to go through. And then, and subsequently the subdivision. So we, um, don't have a subdivision plan at this time that I'm aware of. Um, because we're not, we're not discussing that, we're discussing the redesignation right now, which is a higher level. It would be needed to support any, um, rezoning subdivision and development of the parcel in question. So, um, the report I have here is a few pages long, so I'm not going to read it out, you know, word for word. What I'm going to do is just highlight some things that, um, might recap some things that have already been discussed or things that I'd like to point out to. So the report summarizes comments that we would have gotten, um, in circulating this proposed, proposed redesignation to other entities within government such as infrastructure and natural agriculture, which are the ones that we're going to talk about more. And I'm also going to summarize what, um, our branch might have put together here. So this amendment proposes to re-designate sixty-one point nine two acres, um, in the portion that we have been discussing from agricultural general area to rural residential area. As I mentioned, this redesignation provides the necessary policy support to allow for the future rezoning, subdivision and development of the parcel for a new multi-residential development. One of the, the things that we noted, um, after, um, putting in the, the development plan policies that pertain to this area is that there is one cattle operation, which has been discussed here already, which is located immediately to the south of land's being proposed for redesignation. The minimum mutual separation distance between the designated rural residential area and then cattle operation is eight hundred meters, which I believe the Burns had mentioned before. Based on this information, the mutual setback distances cannot be met for this proposed redesignation. Um, there is also, um, a section in which, um, actually it was Peter, our community, our, my office, had put together about, um, wait, I'm trying to have to read this part that he had put together. He had mentioned that there, um, he would like to, he sent out, um, some previous rural residential areas that had been, um, designated through other development plans, amendments that I've gone through recently. And, um, and he recommends that council consider whether there's an immediate need for the establishment of an additional, of a new rural residential area. I think the current designated areas are not entirely developed at this time. So that's something that we put in there for consideration. Um, but I want to go back to the cattle operation part. So Mantle Bay Agriculture, um, puts in further details about, um, the active cattle operations within the one, one three acres of this area. And they've noted that, again, this proposed redesignation does not meet the mutual separation distances requirements to the neighboring livestock operation. And therefore, it would be inconsistent with the provincial warranties policies and the development plan policies, uh, for open water uses, development plan. So Mantle Bay Agriculture does object to this proposal and does not recommend proceeding the second reading. Mantle Bay Transportation and Infrastructure has noted that they do not object necessarily to this amendment, but they do have some concerns and comments that they've concluded and we put into the report. So some of the things have been talked about already. They, uh, would like to, um, you know, note that they will not support multiple access connections to the PTH access, um, frontage road. They have concerns regarding additional traffic safety, traffic and the safety around the frontage road or the municipal road access connection onto PTH ten. And a, a traffic impact and drainage studies will be required for the future development. So it was noted, um, in discussions earlier that yes, there is already an access road, uh, or, um, a road onto, uh, that PTH access road. And, uh, infrastructure has, has noted that, but they said they have concerns with additional traffic, traffic and safety. They also, um, note that, um, so they would require the traffic impact and drainage studies. And also there would be a permit that would be required under the Transportation Infrastructure Act. If any of this kind of would be moving forward. So in summary, based on the proceeding of the foundation, um, our office, the Brandon Community Planning Office notes that there are provincial objections to this proposed bylaw and that it's not consistent. This bylaw is not consistent with municipalities' development plan. And we recommend council pass a decision not to proceed the second reading of this plan amendment, um, conclude following the hearing, the public hearing today. Um, however, if you do propose, or if you do choose to move forward with second reading, please step aside one below of what we would need next from you. So I wanted to summarize the comments that we heard from agriculture, that we heard from infrastructure, and then what we heard on this in terms of the planning perspective. Um, and then also any questions they would have.
Do we have any questions?
That eight hundred meter buffer zone. So that, that will be, uh, joined, all the way around the, the joining properties, is that?
Uh, you know, I'm not familiar exactly as well as written in your development plan as, but basically you have an urban development plan belief that says you need that eight hundred, that eight hundred meter, um, buffer zone. He gets, I believe it would be all the way around, um.
But only two sides in this case.
Right, but it would still, you would still not be needing it on those two sides, right? It would still be, it would be less than eight hundred meters according to this report. Yeah.
When you mean livestock operation, you mean just the yard area or are we talking the pasture lands?
Um, I, I'm, I believe it would be considered like the entire operation, like the entire parcel of land. I would have to actually clarify that. I'll look into the report to know. Into the development plan. I, um, I'm not as familiar with your development plan as Peter is. Peter is the, the community planner from my office that would have put this report together, but he's on holiday this week. So I'm just filling in for him, um, in terms of the report part of it.
Any other questions?
Charlotte, is there any difference, excuse me, depending on the number of livestock, as to what the buffer area would be?
Yeah. Um, so in the report, we, um, indicate that the hundred, or the eight hundred meter buffer is between a hundred to two hundred animal units. So if we go below that, we would have to look into what the minimum, um, separation distances are. And I believe that this separation would be between that quota.
Okay. There are no other questions?
Do you maybe just ask me to go around?
Sure, yeah.
When we get to the bottom of the stage, just hope these parts are, discussions at that point is, is their discussions of the goal.
Okay. And all the members who've had their opportunity to speak, we will now proceed. Whereas all representatives in regards to development plan amendment by law number twenty-one dash twenty-two-one to redesignate properties located in northwest quarter two eight nineteen WPM, Grant, have been dealt with. Therefore, it is all, the public hearing is concluded and council is in its normal order of business. Negative muber? All in favor?
Okay. And we've already looked at communications and committee reports, council would be moving into the order of bylaws. And, um, the bylaw for Mr. Grant has been placed on the agenda with a resolution of second reading. We would need a motion on the floor before council has its discussion. If council decides to defeat that, that is certainly worse question to do so. So, if you would like to put that motion forward?
Okay. So, uh, it resolved that bylaw number twenty-one dash twenty-two-one to amend development plan by law number zero four dash twenty-eighteen to re-designate part of northwest quarter two eight nineteen WPM from agricultural general area to resid, pardon me, to rural residential area, be ready to second time. We get a muber?
And council, I would request that if you've got concerns on that, that we actually defeat the motion versus not have it considered at all. That way it just closes the books for us.
Okay, so we got council Cory as a mover. Can we get a second here? Councilor Donald. Discussion?
Discussion.
Uh, these things have been something I've struggled with, which I already said. I think, I mean, there's the obvious post of the cattle is, I mean, is all, is, has been brought up. I also try and look thirty years into the future in this and, and I think, well, you know, we've already started one, you know, a couple of miles down. If we start another rural residential here, again, in thirty years, if, uh, Mr. Burns doesn't own his, maybe the next person would want to. own his, maybe the next person would want to do another rural residential and increase. And I think somewhere we have to look at, you know, where do we want the development, where, you know, we, we start running out of the land, the natural lands that probably attract people there in the first place. You know, a lot of people like living in the country, but maybe if you've got ten houses across the road from you, then it all of a sudden isn't really living in the country anymore, it's just living in another town. That's one of the problems I have with some of these. I do like that it's close to pavement in that, you know, I find that having a whole bunch of people driving four miles down gravel roads just to get to pavement to get to work, you know, that part I think is, you know, is a positive, and that's actually why I asked, you know, what you thought was, you know, made a good, a good place for something like this, but, yeah, I do see probably more problems than, than positives in this myself.
Yeah, I agree, this thing needs a little more talk, and I know the, dealing with Mantle Bay Infrastructure, you know, bring up issues and the drainage plan and all this, the costs are going to be huge. It needs, yeah, this needs more discussion.
Council Corey or, pardon me, Councilor Harvitz or Krikulich, do we have any comments or concerns?
Yeah, I guess I have concerns over big trucks going down the road and people complaining. I'm for keeping rural, or ag land, ag land, and I just think that, in my experience, well, I'm closer to other developments that was talked about to the east and by, right by my house, we've got a lot of problems already, and anything, plenty of things, so I, I am not in favor of rezoning.
Thank you. Council McDonald?
Yeah, I just, with the, we have the, in our development plan, we have the eight hundred meter buffer zone, and I just, just think that it's there for a reason to, you know, because we, we all know we get some complaints from people that have moved up to the country and then all of a sudden, the main farm operation all of a sudden turns to smell or the noise or something, and that's a concern.
Any other comments, discussion, questions?
If I could just ask, Sharla, excuse me, if council were to proceed with second reading, this would then have to go to the minister's office for approval?
That's correct, yeah.
The minister has the opportunity to approve it, reject it, or amend it.
Yes.
Is that correct?
And also refer it to the municipal board.
Or refer it to the municipal board. Just in your experience, any idea, the minister, would they be saying perhaps part of this could move ahead, but the eight hundred meter buffer zone, it has to be put in place?
I think that it would not be, I'm not going to speak for what the minister would say, but what they're going to do is look at the fact that there are concerns from community planning, concerns from infrastructure, and then objection from agriculture. So that's three different components of government that have voiced basically red flags, figure or march in terms of magnitude, and would probably look at that component. So, you know, why do those exist? So the chance of it just going forward as is is probably quite small, but, and I'm not going to say that it could go forward, you know, that's not really, that's above my scope of responsibility, but they would definitely be looking at it back. There's multiple components of concerns here, as it's proposed right now, yeah.
Okay, so and for council, your choice is to either approve second reading, at which point it would go through to the minister. There would be an indication that there were objections, and they would receive copies of any presentations that were received today.
Sorry, can I just, I'm sorry, and then also if it were to go to the minister, the local objections would also be included in the past too, right? They're not just looking at the municipal ones, I'm sorry. The local ones are obviously very important as well, so there's multiple ones, yeah. I'm sorry.
No, that's good, and, and those would definitely be included. Council's other opportunity is to defeat the motion for second reading at this point in time, and at which point I would ask them that we also have a motion that there be no further readings so that it is in fact closed off in our books. And that is certainly council's decision to make. I don't know if there's any other questions, comments before the question is called?
Right, it's all yours. So as the discussion has already been completed, I'll call the questions. All in favor?
Council Harvitz?
I am in favor.
Okay. Mr. Krikulich?
I am in favor.
Okay, so we have unanimous not in favor, it's defeated.
And then if I could actually have a motion be resolved that bylaw twenty-one dash twenty-two-one be given no further readings.
Okay, so we get a motion on the floor, we've got a motion. Council Hatch, second here. Council Corey, all in favor?
In favor.
Okay, we've got a hundred percent. Carry.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, thanks for coming up. I will follow along with the course limits to everybody with council's decisions.
Thank you as well.
Thanks for coming up.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Feel free.
Yes, I am.
Do you need me on here anymore?
No, if you want to go at this point, Brett, it's up to you, the rest of the meeting will be pretty quick.
Yeah, I'll just, I'm hardly here, so.
Okay.
I'll just leave you guys.
Okay, thanks for that.
Thank you.
If I will, if I have any questions about, like, particularly, because, yeah, it's Peter that's much more familiar with your development plan, I just don't have that information.
And for another, if I could run into the second here.
Yeah, and, and it's our job, right? So we definitely want to ask those questions in terms of, like, how for future.
And we had differing numbers on number of cattle, so that.
Did we, okay.
Yes, we didn't really have definite.
I see. Oh, I didn't realize, I'm, I'm sorry, I hadn't seen this report until Friday, so that's why I was just to go with what I have here. Okay, okay, thank you, thank you so much, yeah. And don't forget to call me, George.
Okay, thank you.
We're just going to hold on just for a second there. Mr. Kuplaj, just not, never always need.
I just googled an animal unit is defined as the number of livestock required to exceed seventy-three kilograms of nitrogen in twelve months period, so it seems to me that a cow calf is more than one.
Yeah, and we've got the calculations for it.
Can I just look up two thousand for a second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you check the radar, see if, no?
Just one more minute thirty.
Take a look at that.
Okay, so we will resume our council meeting and proceed with the next bylaw. Bylaw number twenty-seven, pardon me, be resolved that bylaw number twenty-seven dash twenty-two being a bylaw for the use of municipal resources in an election, be read a second time, can I get a mover? Council McDonald, can I get a second here? Council Corey, any discussion? All in favor?
In favor.
In favor, we're unanimous, carried. And we're going, this is a third reading coming, so this will be a recorded vote, is that correct? Okay, so be resolved that bylaw number twenty-seven twenty-two be read a third and a final time, can I get a mover? Council Hatch, can I get a second here? Council McDonald, all in favor?
In favor.
And we've got a hundred percent there as well, carried. Move on to bylaw number twenty-eight dash twenty-two, so be resolved that bylaw number twenty-eight dash twenty-two to amend property maintenance and unsightly premises, bylaw number eighteen dash twenty-one, be read a second time, can I get a mover? Council Hatch, and a second here, we've got Council Corey, any discussion? All in favor?
In favor.
Perfect, okay, so we've got a hundred percent carried. And then we've got be resolved that bylaw number twenty-eight dash twenty-two be read a third and final time, and again, this is a recorded vote, can we get a mover? Council McDonald, can we get a second here? Council Corey, in favor? Okay, we'll close, we're carried. We move on to bylaw number twenty-nine dash twenty-two, be resolved that bylaw number twenty-nine dash twenty-two being a bylaw to amend indemnity by law number zero-five dash twenty-eighteen with respect to review of indemnities and per diems, be read a first time, and as there's no discussion or debate on first reading, I'll call the question. Who would be, we have a mover? Council McDonald, Council Hatch is our second here, all in favor?
In favor.
Carried. And we have no unfinished business, so we're going to move on to general business. Be resolved that minor variation application number V three dash twenty-two to reduce the parcel size for the residential parcel of eighty acres to seventy point nine three acres in the egg zone for property located in the northwest quarter of twenty-six eight nineteen WPM lead be approved without conditions, can I please get a mover? Council Corey, second here. Council McDonald, any discussion? All in favor?
In favor.
Okay, carried. Be resolved that variation application number V four twenty-two to reduce the parcel side, pardon me, parcel site width for the residual parcel from a thousand feet to approximately eight hundred and nine feet in the egg zone for property located in northwest quarter twenty-six eight nineteen WPM lead be approved without conditions, can I get a mover? Council Hatch, can I get a second here? Council Corey, any discussion? All in favor?
Favor.
Carried. And we're going to move on to Little Service Subdistrict. Be resolved that Mitchell McPherson be appointed to the Central Essentivoye Watershed District dash the Little Service Subdistrict with a term of office to expire on December thirty-first twenty-twenty-two, can I get a mover? Council McDonald, second here, we've got Council Corey, any questions, discussion? All in favor?
In favor.
Carried. Be resolved that the correspondence from Terry Schreider and Charlotte Cron dated March sixteenth twenty-twenty-two with respect to drainage and Carol Manitoba be received, and a gate be installed on the culvert in accordance with direction from the province of Manitoba, can I get a mover? Council Hatch, second here, we've got Council Corey, any discussion?
Would that be our public works guys installing her or?
No, that'd be us. This is all stated back to the original Carol drainage project from twenty-twelve, so.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Okay, so call the question, all in favor?
Favor.
We've got a hundred percent. Carried. So we're going to move on to be resolved that subdivision application number forty-one fifty-seven dash twenty-two dash eighty-three eighty-one as submitted by Ronald and Ethel Dixon to subdivide part of northeast quarter thirteen eight nineteen WPM be approved, subject to, one, a conditional use order being granted to allow for non-farm single-family dwelling with an egg agricultural general zone, and two, a minor variation order being granted to increase the non-farm parcel from ten point zero acres to eleven point zero acres. Can I get a mover? Council Corey, second here, Council McDonald, any discussion? All in favor?
Favor.
Carried. Moving on to be resolved that the Walonisa Community Foundation Incorporated be added to the municipal liability policy as an additional name insured at no additional cost to the municipality. Can I get a mover? Council McDonald, can I get a second? Council Hatch, any questions?
Do you want to, if you'd like to elaborate on that one? Certainly, we received a request from the foundation. They've indicated in their letter that it is cost prohibitive for them to carry insurance. There are several other municipalities that do include this on their policy. Elaine has had a chance to check with our insurer, and they don't have an issue with it, and there would be no cost to the municipality.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the question, all in favor?
In favor.
Unanimous, we're carried. Okay, so, last on the list here is our adjournment. Be resolved that this meeting is now adjourned, time to meet again on Tuesday, pardon me, meeting to be adjourned at ten twenty-nine, to meet again on Tuesday, May seventeen twenty-twenty-two at nine AM at the municipal office in Walonisa. Can I get a mover? Council Corey, second here, Council Hatch, all in favor?
In favor.
Carried.